Okay, we're going live on LMC YouTube. Hey guys.
A little early, waiting for Lou. I'm communicating with Lou right now.
Okay, can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Do I sound okay?
Yep, sound good.
Okay, I often have a problem and have to sign in a second time to these calls, these meetings to get the sound right.
Not perfect. Far from it, in fact. But better than nothing. But better than nothing. Hi, Lou.
Hi, Lou.
Greg, can you unmute? Unmute Lou. Okay, what's on? Seven o'clock on the nose. Okay, let's open the meeting. Good evening, everyone. This is Village of Atlantic Planning Board meeting on May 6, 2020. Special meeting to work on the Hampshire Country Club applications for special permit for the planned residential development, application for subdivision, site plan, wetlands permit, and variance from the requirement in the floodplain development permit. This is the end of a long process driven by legal requirements and lots of concerns. Village attorney, I'm gonna pass the mic to the village attorney who will summarize how we got to tonight's proceedings.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, as the chairwoman noted, this has been a lengthy process driven by the requirements of New York State law and local law. The applicant applied in 2015, in December of 2015, for approval to develop the Hampshire property. Sorry about that, our phone just rang. The, because of the because of the nature of the property, the size of the property, the proposed development, the 105 units, this was what's called a type one action under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act. There are two processes that go on here. The first is the environmental impact review, and the second is the determination of the actual applications. And here, as you'll see later tonight, there were five approvals that the applicant sought from this board. Planned residential development approval, subdivision approval, site plan approval, floodplain permit, and a wetlands permit. But before the board can consider acting on those permits, it has to go through an environmental impact review process under what's called the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SECRE, as we call it for short. And that involves, first, determining whether there are potentially significant environmental impacts that require study. And the board did that right away in September of 2015. First, it declared itself to be lead agency, which means the agency among all the agencies that have permitting authority with respect to this application, the one that will conduct the environmental review. And then it determined that this was, it issued a positive declaration, which means that there would be an environmental impact study before the board could take any action on the application. And so since September of 2015 until two days ago, the board was engaged in the environmental impact review process. Now, because the issues that arise with regard to all of the permits that were before the board, that are before the board, are essentially the same issues that arise in the environmental impact review process. That's driven by the fact that this is a large parcel that is environmentally sensitive and environmentally challenged. The board did the vast bulk of its review, in fact, probably all of its review, during the environmental impact review process, which is why the time between the environmental determination, which was made on Monday, finally, and today is very short. It's not because the planning board hasn't given due consideration to all the issues. It's because they considered them all during the environmental review process. So that environmental review process started in October of 2015, when the planning board conducted what's called a scoping session. And a scoping session is where the board decides what the issues are that need to be studied in the environmental impact statement. So that took a few meetings, and the scope was decided in November of 2015. The burden was then on the applicant to provide the first environmental review document, which is called the draft environmental impact statement. And there were a lot of studies that were involved in the draft environmental impact statement. And Mr. Messinger can address any details if you have a question. But if you look at the table of contents of the findings that ultimately resulted, it goes from A to X with all of the subjects that were studied as part of that environmental process, including land use and zoning, surface water, groundwater, stormwater management, floodplains, vegetation, wildlife, fiscal conditions, environmental contamination, noise, air quality, all of those environmental issues, as well as the study of alternatives. That all went into the draft environmental impact statement, which the applicant submitted about a year and a half later, in April of 2017. They submitted a preliminary draft environmental impact statement, which the planning board had the responsibility to determine whether it was adequate and sufficient for public review, which the planning board did over a period of months. And then when that was concluded, the planning board held a public hearing. In fact, it held two public hearings on the draft environmental impact statements in February and April of 2018. After those hearings and after the public comments were finished in May of 2018, the applicant had to draft what was called the final environmental impact statement. What the final environmental impact statement does is address all of the issues that are raised and all the comments that are made with respect to the draft environmental impact statement. So the applicant submitted its first cut at the final environmental impact statement, or FEIS, in October of 2018. The planning board then worked with the applicant for a period of time, for almost a year, until sometime in the range of September, August, September of 2019, to get the FEIS in a position where it, in fact, answered all the questions that were raised with regard to the DEIS. In or about September of 2019, the applicant decided that, in its view, the process was complete, and it was not going to participate further in the completion of the FEIS, and demanded that the planning board accept the then draft of the FEIS as final and complete. The planning board felt that it was not final and complete and required additional revision and additional inclusion of information. And so the planning board took over the drafting of that document. And with Mr. Messinger's help, Mr. Messinger had been involved to review all of the drafts and assist the planning board with regard to evaluating the sufficiency of the drafts. Mr. Messinger took over the drafting of that document and produced a draft, a new draft, several months later, which the planning board then went over into around March of 2020. At that point, while the planning board was putting the final touches on the FEIS in order to move things along, the, Mr. Messinger started to prepare the next and final step in the environmental impact review statement, the environmental findings. And so the the planning board, when the planning board on April 6 of this year decided that the FEIS was sufficient and had adequately addressed all of the issues that had to be addressed, it was already considering a finding statement. And what the finding statement does is address all of the issues that are raised in the scope and provide all of the factual information consolidated into one place that's available to make a determination as to whether the as the environmental impact review. And what the planning board has to do at the end of that process is make, is address two findings. One is whether the environmental impact review process has complied with all of the requirements of the SECRE law. And the second is whether the proposed project is consistent, and consistent with social, economic, and other valuable, important considerations, is the one that minimizes, to the extent reasonably possible, all the environmental impacts of the project. And that's not word for word. It's a little more complicated than that, but that's the substance of what the findings are that the planning board had to address. And what the planning board decided, and the planning board adopted these findings on Monday, was that it could adopt the first finding, that the process had been satisfactorily completed, but it could not adopt the second finding. And so it made a, what's called a negative finding under SECRE. And all of that, and the reasons for that are all laid out in about a 70-page document, the finding statement, that if you were present for Monday's meeting, was the first order of business on Monday. And the reason the planning board didn't take comment on that was that it had been taking comment on that for several years, basically. And it was the culmination of an environmental review process that had substantial public input and input from the applicant over a period of years. And this was just the end product of that. So once that, once the SECRE process is concluded by the making of findings, the board turns to the substantive determinations that have to be made. And as I said earlier, there are five substantive determinations that have to be made. The whether to approve a planned residential development, which basically allows the applicant to design the subdivision in a way that doesn't necessarily comply with all of the particular aspects of the zoning law, like setbacks and things like that. But in the planning board's judgment, is good for the village and for the development of the process. And again, I'm paraphrasing, those aren't the exact words, it's more complicated than that, but that's the substance of it. The other approvals that the applicant required were subdivision approval, site plan approval, a floodplain development permit because of where the property is and its relationship to law, sound, and wetlands permit. So once the planning board, as I said, completed the environmental impact review process, it turned to the substantive determinations, recognizing that all of the substantive review of those determinations and the issues related to those determinations had been addressed and had been done during the environmental impact review process. The board is required by law, was required by law, to hold a public hearing with respect to the planned residential development application, the subdivision application, the wetlands application, which is what the planning board did on Monday. It's important to note that when the planning board held that hearing, it was not, and had just voted on these findings, it was not holding a hearing after it had voted. The planning board had voted on the environmental findings, but still had to make a determination on the substantive approvals. But as I said, those, the issues, all of the issues related to those approvals, or at least most of them, related to those approvals, had been thoroughly vetted during the environmental impact review process. So that's why the planning board has before tonight, only two days after the finding statement was completed, and only two days after the public hearing, draft resolutions with respect to those applications. And that's what's before the planning board for action this evening.
Thank you. I think that sums it up where we are. This was a very complicated application. As Mr. Spalzino mentioned, the site for the proposed project is environmentally sensitive and environmentally challenged, being in a floodplain. And there were a lot of issues to sort through and to understand. And a lot of hours and a lot of people who are not here tonight preceded us on this process. And then members of the planning board, as it's constructed right now. And this is all the members of the planning board that are working on this. One member is recused from this application. Somebody the other night wondered to know where everybody was. Well, here we are, this is all there is. And we heard from a lot of people. In fact, there's several inches of public testimony that got incorporated into the DEIS and the FEIS. So we did hear from a lot of people, including people who got up and publicly stated on Monday that they weren't allowed to speak. They did speak, they're in the record in several places. So tonight, we turn our attention to four resolutions that we have in front of us in draft form. Although I think they've been reviewed and commented on, so we should be able to move through them rather quickly. But the first one is a resolution regarding the planned residential development application.
Now, I'm sorry, Chair, can I just ask a question first, before we start going through the resolutions? I just want to confirm with Mr. Spalzino that all of these five resolutions comport with whatever legal requirements we have to, we have to meet. I just want to make sure that we have. Great, I suspected they did, but thank you.
Just for the record, let's make sure. Okay, so we're all good, because this, as Mrs. Spalzino mentioned from the beginning, this was all driven by New York State and local laws. The planning board didn't make up any procedures as we went along. We basically were following the rules. Okay, so first resolution is regarding the planned residential development application. And I don't know, we have several pages of text, but basically, we are resolving to term, to deny the application for, I guess, for for three major reasons. One is because the SECRE was a negative. What's the official word that you call it? Negative finding. Right. The second one is because we haven't had, we don't have consistency from HCZM for the project. And the third one, more, probably the mediest one, is, the lengthiest one, is that we find, and we found this in the SECRE findings document, that the project did not meet the definition of a planned residential development as it's defined in our code. So unless there's any other discussion or questions, I need a motion to approve the resolution which denies the application for the planned residential development.
So moved.
I need a second. Second.
Okay, okay, I'll just call it in favor of denying the application. Cindy?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Lou? Lou, you need to unmute yourself. Greg, can you unmute? Yes. Lou? How do you vote? You voted to deny the application?
I voted yes.
Okay, and I vote yes. This application passes. Resolution passes, excuse me. It's been a long day. Okay, the second one before us is a resolution regarding the subdivision application. And once again, it's a resolution to deny the application based on the fact that of the negative findings from SECRE, because HCZM has not ruled. Because please jump in anytime, Mr. Spalzino, as I struggle to remember. I think we don't need, you don't need
You, after recognizing that because of the negative finding under SECRE and the lack of a determination by the HCZMC, you cannot, as a matter of law, grant the application, then address the merits of the application and find in the draft resolution that, considering all of the requirements the village code imposes in connection with the subdivision approval, that you could not approve the subdivision plan as proposed.
Thank you. I'm gonna throw it to you from now on, because you do a better job than I do. Okay, I need a motion to approve this resolution denying the subdivision application.
Still moved.
Make the motion. I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Let's mix up the order. Richard? How do you vote?
Yes. Yes.
Lou? Cindy?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Passes unanimously. Number three is a application for site development plan. And once again, we have the same two legal reasons why we can't approve this application, and then a description of why, based on the requirements of our village code, it doesn't meet the requirements of the code. Did I get that right? Doesn't meet the requirements of the code. Okay, I need a motion to approve the denial of the site plan development application.
Still moved.
Thank you, Richard. Anybody second?
Second.
Okay, let's have a vote to, on this resolution to deny the site plan approval. Richard?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. The fourth application is with regards to wetlands permit. And this one's a little bit different because it's, I guess it's, I'm really sure.
I'm sorry, was it wetlands and then floodplain development permit variance?
We're on number four, wetlands.
Okay, so in wetlands, wetlands differs, it doesn't differ with respect to the first two reasons, same two legal reasons why you can't grant a wetlands permit here. The third reason is basically that the work proposed by the wetlands permit all depends on the rest of the application. And since the PRD, the subdivision site plan, have been denied, you, you can't really grant the wetlands permit in this present form.
Okay.
May I just confirm something? I thought that we needed to do the floodplain development before wetlands, am I incorrect?
Don't have to. You can do either one.
I got these open. I have these numbered, I thought this was right. Okay.
Okay.
So, I need to call a vote for the resolution that denies the wetlands permit.
Still moved.
Second.
Yes. Okay. And then this is denying the application for the approval of the wetlands permit. So we're denying the permit. Lou, how do you vote?
Yes.
Richard?
Yeah?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. This is, there's a little bit of a time delay on this tonight, I don't know why. Okay, our final resolution is with regards to the floodplain development permit, which is the responsibility of the building inspector. So we're not quite, this has got a little bit of a typo in it that's pointed out to me earlier, we can talk about it in a minute, but building inspector indicated that a variance would be needed by this board for this permit to move forward, so we're dealing with the variance, is that correct, Mr. Spalzino?
You, that's, well, you're dealing with two aspects of this. In this, with regard to the floodplain development permit, unlike the other permits you've just voted on, you're sort of acting like the zoning board of appeals with regard to this one. Under the code, you have jurisdiction, appeals from the building inspector's determination with respect to floodplain development permits, and you have jurisdiction to grant variances from the requirements of that chapter of the code. The, the building inspector determined that the proposed development did not satisfy the hydraulic equivalency requirement of the floodplain development permit chapter. I will not attempt to explain to you what that means. If you want to know, ask Mr. Messinger, because he understands it, I don't really. But, so, you first have to consider, the resolution considers two things. It first addresses whether the building inspector was correct or not in finding that the application did not comply with the hydraulic equivalency requirement, and you addressed this issue in the findings on SECRE and found that he was correct, and that same language is in this resolution. And then the second issue was, assuming he's correct, and they can't get a, not entitled to a floodplain development permit from the building inspector, do you want to give them a variance from that requirement? And that's your jurisdiction. The, like the site plan subdivision plan residential development parts of resolutions, this chapter has criteria for you to apply in deciding whether to grant that variance. And the draft resolution before you explains why, based upon the reasons you found in the SECRE findings, that it would not be consistent with those requirements to grant a floodplain development variance.
Okay. So, I think, this might be my fault, because I had to fix a typo on this yesterday, and I didn't do it right. So, this resolution is not denying the application for floodplain development permit. Application is upholding the decision of the building inspector and denying request for variance. Okay, so, the header on the record, the header on the vote record needs to be corrected. Okay, so we are upholding the decision of the building inspector, and we are denying the request.
I think the header says you're
Was there a question?
I think the header says you're denying
We're denying the approval of the permit.
Right, which is in fact true. It's sort of shorthand for what you're doing. So I think it's okay.
Oh, okay. Even, okay, so, although that comes under the purview of the building inspector, legally we can say we're doing that?
Yes, because the resolution explains exactly what you're doing, the appeal and the variance.
Okay, okay. Does everybody understand that? Because this one's a little complicated than the other ones. Okay?
Yes.
All right. I need a motion then to to adopt this resolution, deny the application for the floodplain development permit.
Still moved.
Still moved.
Anybody second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, Cindy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. That concludes our work here tonight. Concludes our work on the Hampshire Country Club application, and Sure Recreation LLC application. I personally have only been involved with this for a little over two years, but I want to thank all the hard work from the people who worked on this, especially Stuart Messenger, our consultant, who's been with us from the beginning. Correct, Stuart?
Long, long process. I think you guys engaged really fully over the last year, and the finding statement reflects the hard work that you put into it, and so I think you should feel better for that.
I can only speak for myself, but I think that we acted in the best interests, interest of the people of the village of Amerenek. So with that note, do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting, unless anybody has anything else they want to say?
Just thank you to everybody, but still, still moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, we are definitely having a delay here tonight. Okay, let's just do a voice vote, a voice vote, all in favor of the adjournment.
Aye.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, everyone, good night, and please stay safe.
Thank you, everybody, be careful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.